Okay, counsel, let's go. All right, good evening, everyone. This is the Westminster City Council meeting for June the 26th, 2017. In the back of the room, as well as the front, you'll find an American flag. At this time, we'd ask you to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, if you would, please take your role.
Atchison.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Byrd.
Here.
DeCamera.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Pinter.
Here.
Sights.
Here.
We have got a lot of reverb. Okay. Let me try to clear up something because it's a rather large group, and I think I know what some of you may be here for. If you are here for any kind of testimony because you think there's an agenda item for a potential housing development or a development of any kind at the property at 112th and Sheridan, we have no such item on our agenda tonight. We will not be taking public comment other than through the citizen communication piece. That item is going to be scheduled at a later date, but we do not have that date as of tonight for when that will be coming to the city council for a public hearing. So if your purpose was to come to testify, I would recommend you think about whether or not you want to do your time here and then have to redo it again when that does come before the city council at some future date. And that will be advertised on the city website when that date is firm and when we know what it is. The other group that's here, we also don't have anything on the agenda for affordable housing tonight. But again, you are welcome to talk at the citizen communication part, which we'll come to shortly. Is there any other groups here that I'm not aware of that were thinking there was something on the agenda that's not? Okay. First item on the agenda will be item number three, the consideration of the minutes of the preceding meeting of June the 12th and a special meeting on June the 19th. Mr. Baker, if you would, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve with the minutes of both the June 12th, 2017 city council meeting and the special city council meeting of June 19th, 2017, as presented.
Okay, Ms. Sights.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion in second. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. First item on the agenda is a presentation on the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. I've got one somewhere. Now, I'm going to let the department head introduce her staff as she started to, and then I'll let you explain how great you guys are and how much you earned it again. All right, good.
All right, so we have accounting manager Sherri Sanchez. She directly leads the project for the annual financial report. Sherri Young, who was accountant for several years and now is one of our financial analysts. Karen Craig is our special district's accountant. And Vicky Adams was also an accountant for several years and works on our ERP system, our JD Edwards financial system and software. And basically, what this is, is an award from the Government Finance Officers Association for the annual audit that we received. It received an award for presenting fairly the information so that people could read about the transparency of the city, the financial statements. And it goes through a pretty rigorous, it's not a competition, but a rigorous test to see if it meets the requirements of the award. And this is our 33rd year in a row that we've received it.
All right, thank you, guys. Congratulations again.
Judge Sores, where are you at?
Tiffany, do you have the person swearing you in here? Good. Let me refer us back here in just a second. Okay, for the presentation and trying to accommodate some small children being in the audience, I'm going to move the counsel down to item...
Do you need a motion, Mr. Mayor?
No, I don't. I'm going to move us down to item 9A shortly. This will take a couple of minutes, then we'll get back on the regular agenda. This is a swearing in of the new presiding municipal court judge, Judge Sores, who was selected through a competition that was broadly advertised. A lot of people applied. Several of the council members participated in the reviews, came back with a recommendation that was fully endorsed by the city council. And, Your Honor, if you would please bring Your Honor up and give us a piece, let me get a motion done first, and then we'll be right with you then. So, Ms. Pinter, would you like to take the motion, please?
Yes, I move, hold on a second, that the Honorable F. Michael Goodby of the 17th Judicial District Court Judge will swear into office Tiffany Sores, the newly selected presiding municipal court judge.
Ms. Byrd?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your Honor? Now your duty, sir, please.
Thank you, and thank you, council members. I appreciate the great honor that's being given to me, like to your new presiding judge. I've known her quite a while, and as a longtime citizen of this city, I'm very honored.
Would I ask you to do one more thing? Girls, come on down. Come on, stand behind Mom. I had a request earlier, they wanted to be near Mom when this happened. All right, thank you, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Every judge has to take an oath, and all judges take pretty much the same oath. You'll probably recognize some of this language. Attorneys take a similar oath. Are you ready? I, Tiffany Sores.
I, Tiffany Sores.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Colorado, and the ordinances and city charter.
And the ordinances and city charter.
Of the city of Westminster.
Of the city of Westminster.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of presiding municipal judge.
Of presiding municipal judge.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
For those of you, any of you who've planned your wedding, you have an idea of what that wedding is going to look like, right? Your dress, the people that are going to be there, what you're going to say, the vows you're going to use. And then somehow, it turns out to be totally different than what you expected, but in another way, just as magnificent. And I will say something. This is not how I envisioned this evening, but it touches my heart just the same. It touches my heart because through city council, I have been given this awesome privilege to represent this city. And I wanted this job so desperately because of the citizens and the community that embodies Westminster. And I'll tell you something else. This city council that sits behind me, when I became the associate judge a year and a half ago, I only knew one of these members, and it was because her child was in my oldest child's kindergarten class, so I didn't know her as a city council member. And these people work tirelessly for the best interest of the citizens of this city. And that's, my salary stays the same, I'm going to go home to my children. I have no gain for saying this, other than to know this. You may not agree with what they say, you may not agree with the decisions that they make, but they have your best interests at heart, and not only the current people that are in this room and everybody else that's out there, but your children and your children's children. So know that as you voice your opinion, and I'll tell you this, as I sit on the bench and serve the citizens of the community, it is knowing that I am going to protect the rights that the defendants have, that I'm going to protect the victims that have been victimized by the offenders. And that's a lot of what you all are doing. You have a First Amendment right. We do it with respect, we do it with honor, and we voice our opinions and try to move the city in the right direction. And that's what these guys behind us are doing. For you wonderful, amazing people that have come here tonight to support me, it warms my heart, and I can't thank you enough. And I know a lot of you were here a year and a half ago. And that's, this is not my victory. If I were to ask you to raise your hand if you ever made a phone call on my behalf or wrote a letter on my behalf or said something positive or encouraging to me or about me, you would all be doing this because I'm here because of you. You trusted in me, you had faith in me, and you transferred that to this body. I can't thank you enough. What a privilege, what an honor. And I will uphold the oath that I have taken tonight, every day, until the end of my years at Westminster. Thank you for the honor, thank you for the privilege. So, Judge Sores, before we let you run away, let me see if there's any comments from council, aren't quick. And I have Mr. Camera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first, I want to congratulate you, Judge Sores. And for everybody that's here today, I want to let you know, this is a very historic day. We're making history here in Westminster today. Judge Sores is the first woman to serve as municipal judge to the city of Westminster, presiding judge, and we're very proud and excited of that. This was a very competitive process, and I had the privilege, along with Counselor Sights, to serve on the committee, and it was very competitive. We had extremely qualified candidates seeking this position, and I couldn't feel prouder to have you become our presiding judge. I feel extremely confident with you that every resident in our city will be treated with dignity and respect as they go to our court. And I've been nothing but completely impressed by all of the great changes you've made as acting judge over the past few months. Thank you so much. You exude the spirit values, and I think our city will continue to be extremely well-represented while having you on the bench. So thank you very much.
Mr. Baker?
I would just like to remind our new judge that service is both a really privilege, as you so rightly observed, but it's also a burden. So get help when you need it.
Ms. Sights?
So I feel incredibly privileged to have been part of this entire process. With Counselor DeCamera, I was on the search committee, and we had very compelling candidates. But Tiffany consistently rose to the top, and we did all sorts of safeguards to make sure that it wasn't biased in her favor since she was an internal candidate. We were really intentional about making sure that we were judging everybody on the merits. What set Tiffany apart for me was her passion, her integrity, her vision, her drive, but specifically, her philosophy. I got to see her in multiple interviews with different constituent groups. We had community interviews, internal stakeholders. One of the things she talked about with such sincere passion was leaving the imprint of justice on every single case she touched, regardless of the level of severity of the case. And this is because, this is her true belief in public service. When you are before her, you will be treated, there will be an imprint of justice even if it doesn't go your way. And that's something that has such a positive ripple effect in our community. That philosophy, I think, has penetrated me as a council member, and I'm thinking often, what is the imprint that I want on every single policy decision I make? So thank you, Tiffany. Thank you so much for taking on this charge.
Ms. Byrd?
So Judge Sores, I really just want to thank you. I'm extremely grateful that you are bringing your talent and your wisdom and all of your energy to come and invest that here for the city of Westminster. We are so fortunate to have you. Through every interaction I've had with you, I've seen your integrity, your creativity, your desire to move the right thing forward and to do well by all people involved. And I couldn't be more proud to call you our presiding judge. So welcome, and thank you so much.
Ms. Pinter?
I just want to pile on, so grateful, so proud that you've got your ladies with you here this evening. And from day one, you've committed to this community, from adding a juvenile court docket to trying to better serve our residents through a variety of measures. And I'm just really grateful that you're here and that you've chosen to make Westminster your home, and we are going to be really blessed by having you. So thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
I just want to say congratulations. I'm in a little unique position because as a former criminal defense attorney, I've seen you in the courtroom. And it would have been easy to be me to say, oh, I went against her, I can't choose her, I got to stop that. No, I said, I've seen her in the courtroom, and I know that she fights for justice. That is your number one priority when you're in that courtroom. It's not for retribution, not for punishment, it's for justice for the victims, justice for the defendant. And I came away incredibly, incredibly impressed with our interactions. I came away impressed with your, with the way you did this interview process. And I know that the city of Westminster is in incredibly good hands. Our courthouse is in incredibly good hands with you as the presiding judge. I just want to say congratulations.
What do you think, girls? Is it okay? We get to thank Tiffany for what she's been doing for the last year and a half, but what we expect her to do in the future. But I really want to take a chance to thank the family, her husband, for allowing Tiffany to be here and be part of the family that we have here. So, girls, take care of Mom, okay? All right. Jonathan?
All right, the next item on our agenda is the citizen communication.
This is a period of time where we allow citizens to each come to the microphone. They have up to five minutes to discuss any item that they choose unless there's a scheduled public hearing for that item later on in the agenda. We have none tonight, so there's no restrictions on what your item of discussion can be. So far, I have seven people who have signed up to speak tonight, and I will call you down. Each person will get up to five minutes. The green light will come on when your time starts, the yellow will come on when there's one minute left, and the red comes on when it's your turn to stop speaking. This is not, remind for some of you who've never been here before, this is not a two-way conversation. This is a listening point where you get your five minutes, and we listen to whatever you have. And if you have questions, they'll be captured on the tape or by staff, and you'll get an answer to your questions, and it'll be after the meeting. First person I have is Laura Maxey. Ms. Max, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counselors. Thank you, staff. Please forgive me, I will, I'll have to read this, very little eye contact, and it's something that's very sad for me to read tonight.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm here to speak tonight for my friend Laura Cannon. On May 4th, 2017, Laura went for a walk and never made it home. May 5th, her family reported Laura missing because of her age, and the short time that she was missing, a missing persons report couldn't be filed. However, the police did show up, take some preliminary information. Myself and her family began the search for Laura ourselves. By 10:00 a.m., after canvassing the neighborhood, calling hospitals, and posting on social media, we contacted the fire department to ask if they had had an accident in our neighborhood that evening. Much to our horror, we learned that a woman fitting Laura's description had been hit and killed Wednesday evening near Wads and 101st Avenue, not more than 200 yards away from her home. It boggles my mind and her family's mind that the Westminster Police Department was unaware of this when responding to her family's call the morning of the 5th of May. I will not go into many of the details of the family's search because I only have five minutes tonight. From the beginning of Laura's accident to the conclusion of her case just this past week has been more than upsetting. Laura was hit and killed in a crosswalk by a young man who may or may not have been drinking alcohol and smoking marijuana earlier in that day, may or may not have run a red light, and may or may not have been speeding. The coroner supposedly knocked on the family's door at 2:30 a.m. on May 5th. Four children in the home heard nothing, and the family dog, who always walks loudly when someone is at the front door, was silent. Laura's brother was also supposedly contacted by phone. Her brother has no record of any such contact being made or even attempted. The original conversation of the coroner to the family led them to believe that Laura was hit and killed by a young man that ran a red light, excessive speeding, and was presumed to be under the influence. As of the past week, the Westminster DA has decided to file no charges, no charges against the man that hit and killed Laura Cannon, a mother of four. On the evening of May 4th, many lies were changed forever. I'm here tonight to ask for justice for Laura Cannon. We need someone to explain how a mother of four is hit and killed in a crosswalk, and no charges are filed. Her family needs answers. In my opinion, the policies and procedures of the Westminster Police and Coronation Department need to be reviewed. No family should suffer the way Laura's family has. Again, I'm here for my friend Laura Cannon, mother of four. I certainly hope that this isn't the end of Laura's story. Thank you for your time, and rest in peace, my dear friend. And I hope to hear from many, if not all of you, about this travesty. Again, my name is Laura Maxey, 9260 West 101st Place, Westminster, Colorado. My cell is 303-817-5994. And thank you for serving this wonderful community we all live in. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person up I have is Carrie Marble.
Oh, if only I had done this two weeks ago when we were here and there weren't so many people in attendance. My name is Carrie Marble. My husband, Warren, aka Nick, and I reside at 10674 North Osceola Drive. We have been Westminster residents since 2004. I'm here tonight to speak to you about fireworks. For most of my life, the Fourth of July has been my favorite holiday of the year. In the past few years, I have come to dread this time of year. Call logs to the non-emergency number will show that we have placed calls dating back to at least 2014 regarding the nearby usage of fireworks. Last year, at 1:00 a.m. on July 5th, as fireworks were still going off in the background, my husband sent an email to the council asking for assistance with this matter going forward. Thank you, Councilwoman Sights, for your reply. The June-July city edition states that citations are issued. The reply from the police chief last year indicated that no citations were issued, as it is difficult to enforce this law.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilors. Thank you, staff. Please forgive me. I'll have to read this. I have very little eye contact, and it's something that's very sad for me to read tonight.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm here to speak tonight for my friend Laura Cannon. On May 4th, 2017, Laura went for a walk and never made it home. May 5th, her family reported Laura missing because of her age, and the short time that she was missing, a missing persons report couldn't be filed. However, the police did show up, take some preliminary information. Myself and her family began the search for Laura ourselves. By 10:00 AM, after canvassing the neighborhood, calling hospitals, and posting on social media, we contacted the fire department to ask if they had had an accident in our neighborhood that evening. Much to our horror, we learned that a woman fitting Laura's description had been hit and killed Wednesday evening near Wads and 101st Avenue, not more than 200 yards away from her home. It boggles my mind and her family's mind that the Westminster Police Department was unaware of this when responding to her family's call the morning of the 5th of May. I will not go into many of the details of the family's search because I only have five minutes tonight. From the beginning of Laura's accident to the conclusion of her case just this past week has been more than upsetting. Laura was hit and killed in a crosswalk by a young man who may or may not have been drinking alcohol and smoking marijuana earlier in that day, may or may not have run a red light, and may or may not have been speeding. The coroner supposedly knocked on the family's door at 2:30 AM on May 5th. Four children in the home heard nothing, and the family dog, who always walks loudly when someone is at the front door, was silent. Laura's brother was also supposedly contacted by phone. Her brother has no record of any such contact being made or even attempted. The original conversation of the coroner to the family led them to believe that Laura was hit and killed by a young man that ran a red light, excessive speeding, and was presumed to be under the influence. As of the past week, the Westminster DA has decided to file no charges, no charges against the man that hit and killed Laura Cannon, a mother of four. On the evening of May 4th, many lies were changed forever. I'm here tonight to ask for justice for Laura Cannon. We need someone to explain how a mother of four is hit and killed in a crosswalk and no charges are filed. Her family needs answers. In my opinion, the policies and procedures of the Westminster Police and Coronary Department need to be reviewed. No family should suffer the way Laura's family has. Again, I'm here for my friend Laura Cannon, mother of four. I certainly hope that this isn't the end of Laura's story. Thank you for your time, and rest in peace, my dear friend. And I hope to hear from many, if not all, of you about this travesty. Again, my name is Laura Maxey, 9260 West 101st Place, Westminster, Colorado. My cell is 303-817-5994. And thank you for serving this wonderful community we all live in. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person up I have is Carrie Marble.
Oh, if only I had done this two weeks ago when we were here and there weren't so many people in attendance. My name is Carrie Marble. My husband, Warren, AKA Nick, and I reside at 10674 North Osceola Drive. We have been Westminster residents since 2004. I'm here tonight to speak to you about fireworks. For most of my life, the 4th of July has been my favorite holiday of the year. In the past few years, I have come to dread this time of year. Call logs to the non-emergency number will show that we have placed calls dating back to at least 2014 regarding the nearby usage of fireworks. Last year at 1:00 AM on July 5th, as fireworks were still going off in the background, my husband sent an email to the council asking for assistance with this matter going forward. Thank you, Councilwoman Sights, for your reply. The June-July City Edition states that citations are issued. The reply from the police chief last year indicated that no citations were issued as it is difficult to enforce this law. In the past, we've traveled out of town to avoid the nightly shelling, but that has not been an option recently. This year, we will soon be spending a few nights at a nearby hotel in an effort to have some peace and quiet after dark. The city-sponsored show is wonderful, but we don't need to attend. Standing in the parking lot of Legacy Ridge Golf Course last year awaiting the start of the city show, we could see fireworks from the Whisper Ridge area and Windsor Park and just about every direction nearby. When my husband served in the Army, he was a combat engineer and blew things up for a living. The firepower of the fireworks we hear exceeds what he used years ago. These are aerial shows in people's backyards. All that's missing is a musical accompaniment. In an attempt to pinpoint locations, we have even driven by the offending areas to see if we can witness an explosion and file a complaint. So far, we've only been able to smell the cordite and smoke. On February 6th of this year, my husband sent a letter to the Chief of Police with a copy to the council with some suggestions about how to proactively address this matter for 2017. Thank you, Councilwoman Pinter, for your reply that you would address this matter with the council. The current approach to try to control the usage of illegal fireworks is ineffective. In our area, we know to expect fireworks on New Year's Eve and if the Broncos win the Super Bowl. Last month, evidently, a high school graduation warranted fireworks too. Any day ending in a Y passes as a fireworks occasion for some at this time of year, but right now, it's the worst. This year, the local fireworks started on June 18th. On that evening, I spoke with Officer Collins, I hope I remembered his name correctly. He explained the difficulty in policing this matter with known chronic offending areas. I'm here to reiterate our request for a different approach to hopefully reach residents who do not care to observe the law. Perhaps the message needs to include an appeal to the dog lovers, as dogs do not respond well to the constant explosions. Neither do veterans who suffer from PTSD. Neither do people who suffer from anxiety. Neither do shift workers like ER doctors who might be called upon to save a limb if one of those fireworks goes awry. Perhaps working with the HOAs via social media might be useful. We're asking for the courtesy of a follow-up reply, and better yet, an action plan to address the problem going forward. Five to 10% of the population should not be allowed to make life miserable for at least a two-week span for the 90% to 95% of the law-abiding citizens in Westminster as we celebrate the birth of this nation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person I have is Inez Marquez.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Inez Marquez, and this is my wonderful daughter Sylvia Yuluberry. Again, my name is Inez. I live at 8200 Sheridan Boulevard here in Westminster. I am a leader of the WOW, we organize Westminster, as well as United for a New Economy. Many of you might recognize me. I had red hair, bright red hair. I've met with you already earlier, you know, this year, and I was struggling. I was struggling when I met with you, and I'm struggling even now, today, as we speak. If I wasn't paying 100% of my income to rent, I would be able to afford necessary medicine as well as for my daughter's school fees she owes from last year and then new year coming up. It is not just me here today. It is my WELL leaders. Can you please stand in solidarity with me? One year ago, on Coming Home Day, city council created a proclamation and made a promise to these people and the rest of the city to build more affordable housing. And we have this still, and we have this proudly. As of today, we have seen no change, and the housing crisis has gotten worse. We know this because we are living it. We have also been hitting houses, hitting the streets, knocking on neighbors' doors. We have signed petitions. Over 300 people that are in need of affordable housing. And we have copies if you like them. We need change. We need change. We need help. We need help. We all need affordable housing and renters' rights. We have no rights as renters, and we get pushed over like we're nothing, and we pay lots of money to live. We deserve it. We are a community, and we are looking to you for leadership in this housing crisis. And we are looking forward to working together in the future. Please help us. Thank you.
My name is Melissa Hastings, and I'm also a leader of WE Organize Westminster, and I live in Terrace Gardens. First, I want to thank you for hearing me. And I'm just going to read what it says because I wrote it down, and I'll get off track if I don't. As you know, we have been working to get more affordable housing and renters' rights in Westminster. We know it should be possible for working families to afford their homes and still be able to pay for their groceries, gas, and other necessities. A year ago, you declared Coming Home Day. In that proclamation, you stated your commitment to more affordable housing in Westminster. Since that day, we have met with several members of council to find out their plans. All the members we spoke to said the same things about researching the need and telling us about the projects in place for around 100 units. That won't even make a dent in that need. They all talked about the need for funding and asked for suggestions on how to get that funding. We have done our own research and talked to experts across the country on how other cities have funded their own affordable housing. I have copies of our suggestions if I can...
Give those to the city clerk, please.
I'm just going to read what it says. "Community-led solutions to the housing crisis. WE Organize Westminster is a group of residents comprised of homeowners and renters alike who are fighting for more affordable and dignified housing in the city of Westminster. WELL leaders have identified these issues, such as the lack of funding to build affordable housing units, as well as predatory and unjust practices done by apartment complexes and landlords across the city. With the passing of these policies, Westminster could serve as a model city for others across the country in dealing with affordable housing and development. We suggest an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. WELL is recommending the city start addressing the lack of affordable housing by creating a permanent funding source, or an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that can be used towards preservation, construction, rental assistance, and pathways to ownership. As for our rights, we're suggesting mandatory translated leases. The city should hire part-time contractors to translate residential leases for residents who speak Hmong, Vietnamese, or Spanish. Landlords should submit copies of their lease to the city for translation when they register their property with the city. Landlords should also inform tenants of the translation program when negotiating the lease. Mandatory itemized receipts..." This one gets me because I don't understand how you can not give somebody a receipt. But I've heard so many stories that people aren't getting receipts, and then they're getting double-charged because in good faith, people gave money for their rent, and then they decided, oh, well, you need to pay again because we want you. Landlords should be required to provide itemized receipts for each monthly payment, as well as any application fees or security or pet deposits, so that tenants understand exactly where their hard-earned money is going. Free walk-in legal clinic. The city should work with local bar associations and law firms to provide publicly accessible legal aid clinics specifically geared toward low-income renters to ensure that all residents have access to justice. Increase funding and training for inspection program. We are proposing an updated rental property maintenance program at the city level that addresses the current issues that come with a lack of new affordable housing development. Landlords prey on families that are caught in a market with fewer and fewer affordable options, and families face retaliation or the possibility of losing their homes from contacting the city and reporting bad actors. In closing, I would like to say that for me, if I have to pay a little more at the grocery store, if there was a sales tax, so that money would go towards affordable housing, I'd be willing to do that. Because right now, they do it with the gas all the time. People pay more for gas. They don't drive to a whole nother city to get gas. People aren't going to drive to a whole nother city to get their groceries when they can walk to Walmart. We have around 300 signatures from community members that agree that something needs to be done about this problem. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Rick Andrews. You have a Rick Andrews.
Howdy. My name is Rick Andrews, and there's a lot of people here, so I won't take too many people's time up tonight, especially because I'm beating a dead horse. I'm here to complain about the fireworks. I've lived in the city for almost 34 years. What used to be a nonexistent problem has gotten to be bordering unbearable. I'm tired of picking them up out of my yard. They terrify my dog, and they started 10 days ago in my neighborhood. Enough's enough. How about hiring extra cops, putting them out on the street, and paying overtime for the holidays? If they issue citations for every stop that they make, you can recoup the cost. This is ridiculous. I don't know, and that may or may not be the answer, but something needs to be done. This is out of control, and I'm tired of it. I mean, they go off at 2:00 in the morning, they go off at 6:00 at night. Doesn't matter. Seriously, they started 10 days ago in my neighborhood, and they won't stop until July 12th, something in there. I mean, they go forever. And I don't know what the answer is, but this is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Charles Ragsdale.
My name is Charles Ragsdale, 8120 Osceola Street, Westminster. Good evening, Mayor Ratchison, City Council, City Manager. I'm here tonight representing myself and the Observatory Heights Neighborhood Association. My goal is to express our neighborhood's concerns over the Gregory Hill Pump Station and Storage Tank Replacement Project. In respect of your time, we have asked individual members of our neighborhood not to sign up to speak this evening, but I do ask all of those who joined us this evening regarding this topic to stand with me. Our neighborhood was established predominantly in the late 1950s and through early 1980s, although we have homes that date back as far as 1907. There are approximately 90 homes in our Observatory Heights neighborhood bordered by Lowell Boulevard on the east, 80th Avenue on the south, Oakwood on the west, and Bradburn on a north diagonal. Ours was one of the first custom home neighborhoods in the city of Westminster. Many of the homeowners in Observatory Heights are still the original builders or owners of the homes, and when there is turnover of properties, we seem to often attract long-term residents of the city. Our neighbors include a former City of Westminster council member, former Colorado State legislators, the family of an Adams County Commissioner, a long-serving member of the Westminster Planning Commission, a board member of the Westminster Public Schools, a retired chief judge for the 17th Judicial District, as well as the first Westminster city manager. We continue to be frustrated and disappointed in the communications from the city and the lack of transparency regarding the Gregory Hill Pump Station and Storage Tank Replacement Project. For years, we've invited staff members and city council members to attend our association meetings, and they often have come to give us valuable information about projects that affect our neighborhood. In the past, they indicated that at some point in the future, the tanks would need to be replaced. They just didn't tell us that the tanks were going to be moved to a different location or that they were going to be nearly twice the size of those that exist on the hill today. Many of our members attended the open house that the city sponsored on June 21st. When we got there, it was obvious that this was not an open house to get information or input from the citizens. This was a victory lap, basically to tell us what the staff had decided they were going to do to our neighborhood. They are not interested in suggestions for changes. The attitude was, here it is, now live with it. Since the city had obviously not expected this neighborhood turnout to be so large, the city manager assured us at the end of the meeting that the staff would look into the objections and suggestions we had to project to the project as presented that evening. Bright and early the next morning, the city staff and a whole herd of other people showed up at the tank site, the current tank site, to go through and look at the tanks and the pump house that needed to be destroyed and to plan logistics to carry out the project. It's hard to believe that any of our considerations were even given any thought or brought up at that point, the very next day, given the timeframe. The residents of Observatory Heights Neighborhood Association recognize that water is important to our city and that the quality and quantity of water and water pressure throughout the city is vitally important. However, we're not convinced that the staff of the city of Westminster considered all possible alternatives before going forward with the proposed project. What are we asking? We're asking for this project to be slowed down and reviewed. We want to work together toward a solution that benefits all of the residents of the city and yet recognizes the current proposal as putting industrial building structures 50 feet or less in front of residential homes. We're not eager to litigate this matter. As long-term inactive residents of the city of Westminster, we're hoping that with council's direction, staff will work with us towards a better solution. There's no question that home values will be impacted on the homes directly adjacent to the project. Since I'm running out of time, I provided you with a copy of this to each of you, and I hope you'll read it after we get away from here. Thank you for giving me this few moments this evening, and I hope you'll consider this in the future.
Is there anyone who did not sign up that still wishes to speak tonight? Okay, I have one coming up.
to our city and that the quality and quantity of water and water pressure throughout the city is vitally important. However, we're not convinced that the staff of the city of Westminster considered all possible alternatives before going forward with the proposed project. What are we asking? We're asking for this project to be slowed down and reviewed. We want to work together toward a solution that benefits all of the residents of the city and yet recognizes the current proposal as putting industrial building structures 50 feet or less in front of residential homes. We're not eager to litigate this matter. As long-term inactive residents of the city of Westminster, we're hoping that with council's direction, staff will work with us towards better solution. There's no question that home values will be impacted as, on the homes directly adjacent to the project. Since I'm running out of time, I provided you with a copy of this, to each of you, and I hope you'll read it after we, we get away from here. Thank you for giving me this few moments this evening, and I hope you'll consider this
Is there anyone who did not sign up that still wishes to speak tonight? Okay, I have one coming up.
Hi, my name is Mary Toonberg, 8661 Norwich Street. Pulled it down, okay, thanks. I've written out a few speeches, but I'm just going to speak a little extemporaneously. First of all, regarding this project, you plan to basically double the amount of water supply Westminster, or this, this area. The Gregory Hill Project represents 20% of the total city water storage. Well, I'm wondering, and then you're going to add another one, so you're going to have 9 million gallons worth of water. Where the population is going to come from? And where the employment is going to come from? When I looked up sustainability plan for the city of Westminster, I was again reminded that the Westminster Mall area is going to have 2,400 residents just in that one project, which starts with 400 square feet per unit. So because we are a suburban, primarily homeowner community, who are you planning on putting here? I do know, because of a town hall meeting I went to on Friday, that the state budget is increased every year $1 billion to pay for Medicaid. So we are, I'm wondering if the vision of, of the city council members, you know, and there, then there's the 500 units at the, near the Church Ranch Road and Westminster, Westminster Boulevard is, that's 500. And then the 500 that's right over here at, just across from the golf course on Sheridan, across from Highland Greens. So right there, that is, is, is a very, is, is a huge influx of the population. And we are planning this double, this more than double of the 9 million just for that Gregory Hill Project for 20 years, and we've had the same capacity or pretty much grown the capacity for 50 years. I think it is very important that the citizens be aware of the current city council's plan for this massive growth and whether we want it. Because behind the water issue, and 40 feet high makes it a terrorist target, actually. And so I'm saying that this whole plan needs to be reviewed in, in terms of whatever the United Nations Agenda 21, ICLI-associated Sustainability Project reflects in this water plan. Thank you very much.
One last opportunity. Does anyone who didn't get a chance to sign up that still wants to speak? Okay, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. It's a group of routine matters to be acted on with a single motion and vote. Uh, hm? I'm sorry. Got ahead of myself. Mr. Tripp, it's up to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be really brief. Tonight, we had a ceremony before the meeting, and I just want to recognize we've recently appointed two new department directors, and they're here this evening. I want to recognize them publicly and thank them for agreeing to, to run these two important departments. John Hall is in the back of the room, and Dee Martin, I believe, is also in the room. And I'd like to recognize those folks, and if you raise your hand, John and Dee, everybody who's walking out, give them a high five.
All right, council comments. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know most people are leaving, but I just wanted to thank everybody who came tonight to talk to us, to address council, to give your opinions on the variety of topics that you came and talked about. One of the things that makes Westminster such an amazing community is that you have people who care so much about what happens in the city, and you're taking the time out of your day from working to whatever you've done in your day to come and spend your time here and telling us your thoughts and opinions, and it matters. I mean, what you come out here says really impacts the thinking of what council does up here, so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who took the time to come out and address council and just say thank you for the citizen engagement. Again, that, the passion and commitment of our residents is what makes Westminster such an amazing place. On another note, there's a couple of, a number of us attended the Colorado Municipal League Conference this past week, and that, that is an incredible, incredible opportunity to collaborate and to just get some, you know, get other ideas from other municipalities to learn best practices and to see if there's other jurisdictions who have the same issues as you and learn, you know, they learn from us, we learn from them. But I just want to take an opportunity to congratulate my colleague, Councilor Shannon Byrd, who at that conference was selected to serve as a representative on the Colorado Municipal League's Executive Board, representing the large cities throughout the state of Colorado. That is such an influential organization that dictates, or that advocates for policy across the state, and to have a representative on that board is incredibly important, and to have Councilor Byrd, who is going to be an incredible advocate for Westminster and municipalities around the city, is, is really a great honor. I just want to say congratulations, Shannon.
Ms. Seitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first off, I want to also thank everyone who showed up tonight to address city council. And we had quite the cross-section of different issues that were brought to our attention today. As a city councillor, I really do appreciate that level of engagement, and it does help inform the policy decisions that we make. I am one of those residents who can't stand the fireworks. My poor little dog last year got holes in his paw, her paws from, she gets so scared rubbing at the door, so it really breaks my heart, and I would ask everyone to be more considerate of their neighbors. You don't know what somebody is dealing with, and whether it's PTSD, anxiety, or they need to sleep, let's just be better neighbors. Like Mayor Protem Garcia and Councilor Byrd, I was at the Colorado Municipal League's annual summit last year, and I have to tell you, it's exciting for two reasons. One is it's wonderful to learn about best practices and ways we can better serve our community. What are our neighbor communities doing? What are their plans? What are the issues that we're all struggling with? And I will tell you, affordable housing is one of them. That's an issue that, that a lot of communities are really earnestly trying to crack that nut and to figure out how we help our residents. We want to make sure that we have a diverse population and housing stock that meets the needs of all of our residents, not just single-family homeowners. And that's something that I, I think in Colorado right now is, is a pressing concern. But it's also nice to go to CML to hear about what we are doing well. And I will tell you, there are some things that our city are doing incredibly well, so much so that our, our city did have a few different presenters. John Hall from Economic Development was one of the presenters, trying to share our knowledge and expertise with other smaller communities on economic development. And then Sarah Nermella, who is our program manager and real estate manager for our downtown project, also was a speaker. And I have to tell you, I'm on city council, but sitting in the audience, listening to the presentation on the different types of work that we are doing in Westminster really did give me goosebumps. We really are working very hard with very bright people to try to make a meaningful impact on the quality of life of our residents here. So I just wanted to say thank you to staff for showcasing us in that way. I do want to acknowledge that we had two new department heads today, two new departments, which is economic development. John Hall, thank you so much for stepping up to this leadership role. I was at an event maybe three months ago, an economic development event, and one of his peers came up to me and told me, you have the best person in economic development in Colorado on your team. So that's praise from someone who really understands his expertise, and I wanted to share that with you. The next is Dee Martin, and I, I have to tell you, we always talk about the secret sauce here in Westminster is the, is the quality of staff that we have and the culture that we have. And Dee has been instrumental in that. Just recently, in the, in the municipal judge search, I got the privilege of working side by side with her and was consistently impressed with her and her team. Thank you so much for stepping up to your leadership role. And then I'm sure all of you are planning on coming and joining everything Westminster has to offer on 4th of July. It starts early at 8:00 a.m., our fire department is going to have a fishing derby. So I hope to see you there, and then later in the evening for fireworks.
Ms. Byrd.
So I'll be brief, because we're going on quite a while with, with everything this evening so far, but I just want to speak from the heart and let you know, I appreciate our citizens coming out to talk to us. I know it's hard. I remember the first time I ever did public comment, and I was scared to death. So for anybody who is here who spoke, I want you to know, I appreciate your courage to come up and share your stories with us, and your time up here isn't wasted. We listen and we care. Some of these issues, we have been hashing out for a long time, and they're just hard issues. The issue of having enough housing that people can afford in our city is something that not just Westminster is grappling with, but all throughout the metro area. And the unfortunate piece about that, well, there are several unfortunate pieces. There's limited money available to invest in this, and when you do have a solution, it takes a while before you ink the deal, and then you have a groundbreaking, and then you have units constructed for people to actually move into. So I know a year ago, we did issue a proclamation, the coming home proclamation, to exemplify our commitment to affordable housing. That's still there, and the fact that there aren't new places for people to move into right now, I don't want that to discourage people or make you believe that that means we've lost our commitment. We are still working and looking for more opportunities. I'm going to share with you about, I don't know, about three or four months ago, there was an economic forecasting event hosted by one of the Metro North Chamber of Commerce. And one of the statistics that they shared with the group is that our area is growing so fast that if the north metro area were to keep up with population growth in terms of available housing stock, we would need to be building 59 new units every single day. And that's, it's just not been something that I know we've been able to do, and I don't think there are any other municipalities on this end of the metro area who are doing it either. So that brings me to another point with, with water. All of this fits together. Growth is happening, and we can either be victim to it in our city or we can plan. And when you plan, you can harness all the great things that come with growth, new people, new ideas, but, but we'd also like to avoid some of the problems that come with growth, which, which is housing that nobody can afford. So we are working on that. The best practice, from what I have seen, is to plan. I think any business would tell you that's the same thing. Change is inevitable, and the best thing you can do is plan. So, and then on to the Gregory Hill water issue that we've been talking about. Thank you to all of the residents in our Observatory Heights neighborhood who've come out to talk to us. I appreciate you sharing what's happening and what your perspective is. We will have additional conversations. I don't want you to think that we're not listening. We absolutely are, and we will be having additional conversations with you about this to make sure we can come to some resolution that, that makes you love your city even more than I hope you do right now. So thanks again for being here tonight.
Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank everybody for coming here tonight and taking time out of your busy lives to, to share your concerns with us. I, I want to take a moment to address the issue of affordable housing, and I want to let you know that this is an issue that this council and our city staff takes very seriously. And that is why we've developed an Affordable Housing Task Force to, to really make sure that we're intentional and to make sure that we're developing a plan that we will implement in the next few years. And my understanding is, is that plan's going to be coming to council in August, so we can actually talk about next steps. But I want to thank you for continuously bringing this up. I know it takes a lot of courage for your, for some of the folks that came and shared their personal stories. I know it's not easy, and for that, I thank you, because I think it's good to keep that, as this was a three-week program, and it was with mostly with folks from the United States. We also had people from Ireland, Australia, New Zealand, Canada, and Mexico that were part of the program. And you had here people from law enforcement, from the Department of Transportation, from elected office, and it was really a great place to, to learn about what people are doing across the globe to continue to make their cities better. But imagine my surprise when, in one of our classes, which focused on local government in the digital world, and it really talked about best practices and things that cities could be doing to, to really, you know, be part of the new trends and make sure that we're keeping up with the times when Westminster, Colorado was actually featured for the work that we're doing to be innovative. This case specifically talked about the work that we're doing with GIS technology in our water, in our Public Works Department, and I just couldn't be prouder to see our city represented. You know, by the end of the program, my classmates were referring to Westminster as Bestminster, which is the new name, just so you know, that's how we're calling it now. That's what Councilor Pinter started calling it. But by the end of the program, people were just raving about Westminster. And, you know, being there, I'm looking forward to sharing all of the new learnings and findings that I, that I received in the program, but I was just reminded of how fortunate we are. We have an extremely talented workforce, and, and that's not just lip service, that's, that's really the truth. I think we are extremely fortunate to have our city manager, Don Tripp, leading our city. You know, I kept talking to colleagues, and they were always impressed about the work that we've been doing. I couldn't stop bragging about our deputy city manager, associate attorney, our chief. There were a lot of chiefs of police, so I kept talking about our chief to everybody that would listen. So I just want to thank you all. I came back feeling prouder to be representing our city and more re-energized to continue to do the great work that we're doing here. So thank you very much.
Mr. Baker.
Really, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to comment on another topic, but events of tonight need us to focus. Government is very difficult. It's very difficult because you're trying to balance and you're weighing competing forces, and nobody likes to hear bad news. Oh, my goodness gracious, nobody likes to hear bad news. But if we don't look at the difficult side of problems, we're not doing ourselves any favor, and we're probably not going to come up on any solutions. One of my disappointments with some of the steps that this council has taken in affordable housing is some of the affordable housing that we have supported to the tunes of millions of dollars will go away after a while. And I don't think most of it know, most of us know that. We think once affordable housing's made, it's there, but that's not the case. A significant amount of the affordable housing that we have subsidized in 40 years will go away. And if there were residents in those buildings getting really modified rents, they could all be kicked out and replaced with market-paced rents. So some of the things we've done are not a permanent solution to what's going on. And we need to recognize that, and we need to take ownership of that. And the other part of the thing is that it sort of does on the fireworks, a law that we don't enforce, okay? Well, there are other laws that we don't enforce that have much more horrible impacts on our residents. According to the Denver Post, there are maybe 220,000 unlawfully present people in the state of Colorado, people who have not been given permission to live in our country and enjoy the benefits of being in our country. They have taken it. They have taken something to which they are not entitled to. Of those 220,000 people in the state of Colorado, 131,000 are in the Denver metro area. Again, taking things which they're not entitled to take, taking jobs, taking houses. If you divide 130,000 by Westminster's 1/30th share of the Denver metro area, that comes to about 4,000 people. So how many residents is that? How many apartments are those people taking that would be empty if they weren't here? Quite a lot. Quite a lot, in the thousands. That's a difficult problem to face, but it is the reality. That's a difficult problem to face, but it is the reality of what we face. And we can ignore it, but only to the detriment of the people who told us their stories tonight. And we need to be braver than we've been, and we need to deal with the difficult problems we face. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Pinter.
Yeah, thank you so much. I know that most people have gone home, so I'm talking to people who have left the building. But I just wanted to take a minute to respond to the very heartfelt comments that we heard, both with regard to our water infrastructure, as well as to affordable housing. And I'll do water infrastructure first. I think this is something that the council has made a priority for many years, making sure that we are taking care of our city, and that we are keeping rates affordable. We have really, really tried to find both the best solutions for our community, but also the most economical ones. And we heard some pretty compelling stories. I was able to attend part of the citizen outreach meeting from June 21st about the dangers of having a water infrastructure that isn't safe for public consumption, or that isn't safe to hold the water it's designed to do. And so I am grateful so much for our engineers, for their dedicated work. They spent extensive time talking about the 40 different sites, and the different plans that they had reviewed, and talking through the process. And I know that they'll continue to share about why this site was selected, and how diligent they have been over many years in trying to find solutions that are both economical and good stewards of our resources, as well as will be good stewards of our water. So I want to thank the residents who are continuing to participate in that conversation, as well as the residents who are taking the time to listen about the complex problems that our engineers are facing. I also wanted to say thank you to everyone who came to speak about affordable housing. This is such a huge crisis, and to hear that our residents are spending 100% of their income on rent is just horrifying, because what that really means is that family is barely holding on, and they are trying to stay here in the city, but they are, you know, can you imagine, like if you just had one unexpected car expense, if you just had one unexpected medical expense, what that would mean for your community? And I'm really grateful that this city has spent so much time investing in affordable housing, and when we get turned down for funding from state sources, that we search again, and then we get turned down, and we search again for additional funding. And we'll continue to do so, because we know that it's people's lives that are on the line if they don't have options for a safe place to be. And I wanted to call, to respond to something briefly that Mr. Baker said, and I pulled up some data. A guy was wearing a shirt about the new economy, and one of the data reports that I've cited for this council a couple of times, is research from the New American Economy that does great aggregating data on what immigrants do for our community. And one of the things that I thought was really compelling, we, they pull data from, by states, and they have it by congressional districts. And so that was the smallest information I could get. And so for our congressional district, which is Colorado District 7, we do have a number of residents, about 10% of our immigrant residents, about 10% of our population, and those immigrants paid in taxes $486 million in 2014 alone, and their spending power is $1.6 billion. There are 3,689 immigrant entrepreneurs, and they are continuously giving back, both in paying of the taxes and in contributing, both in creating jobs and keeping their families together. And so I just want to thank all the immigrants who have stepped up and made America their home. My family came here as refugees, and I know that that's been really a powerful and compelling story for my family, and when I see other people do that, I know how much they're committed to America, and I hope that we continue to work together to make this a place that we all are proud of, and that it's a community that's bound together and taking care of everyone who lives here.
Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I need to underline that my comments were about people unlawfully present in the United States. They were not whatsoever about immigrants. Thank you.
Everyone here who works here pays taxes, just so you know. So if someone is unlawfully here, what that means is they're paying taxes and getting no government benefits in return.
Seeing no other, one else asked to make comments, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, this will be the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of routine matters to be acted on by a single motion and vote. I understand we have one item that has been requested to be removed from the consent agenda, so Mr. Baker, I'll let you make the motion.
Really, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city council adopt the consent agenda. Items 8A, 8B, 8C, 8D, 8E, 8H, HF, AH, AI, AJ, AK, AL, and AM.
Okay, as I understand, it's all items with the exception of G.
Correct.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? Ms. Seitz.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda for all items with the exception of item 8G. And as soon as I can get you to the vote point, I will. At this point, if you would please cast your vote with your lights. Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. And at this point, I have someone who'd like to make the...
I have it up. Yeah. Okay, hang on just a second, I'm trying to get back to the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Garcia.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I authorize, I move to authorize the city manager to enter into an amendment to the contract dated December 21st, 2016, with Agency Off Record, Inc., to provide an additional $28,000 in funding for the development of the upgraded economic development website, bringing the total value of the city's contract with Agency Off Record, Inc., for this work to $77,000.
Okay, Ms. Seitz.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Mr. Baker, you asked to have it removed. Do you have any comments?
Yes.
Okay. There being no other comments, ladies and gentlemen, please cast it with your votes. I have a vote of six to one in favor of the motion. Therefore, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda will be item number 10A. This is a move to pass Council's Bill number 25. Ms. Byrd.
I move to pass Councilor's Bill number 25 on first reading, amending the 2017 budget of the Utility Capital Project Reserve and Water Funds, authorizing a supplemental appropriation of $1,300,000 from the 2017 estimated revenues into the Water Supply Development Project account.
Ms. Pinter.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker.
Atchison.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
DeCambre.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Seitz.
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion that's carried on a 7-0 vote. Next item on the agenda will be item number 10B, Council's Bill number 26. Ms. Pinter.
Yes, let me get that. I've got it here. I move to pass Councilor's Bill number 26 on first reading, authorizing the city manager to sign the lease agreement between the City of Westminster, Highland Hills Park and Recreation District, and Top One, Inc., aka Doing Businesses, Bender's Bar and Grill, to operate the restaurant in the ICE Center at the Promenade.
Ms. Seitz.
Second.
Just for the record, I've had a request from one of the council members, and that request has been approved by the council to allow him to abstain from voting because of a potential conflict with this item. So Councilmember Garcia will not be voting on this item. Is there any other comments from the motion by any member of council? Mr. Garcia.
Sure, just to quickly clarify, my daughter works at Bender's, so just, and believe me, she doesn't make a whole lot of money, but just to avoid any kind of appearance of impropriety, in consultation with the city attorney and my fellow councillors, I'm going to abstain on this vote.
Any other comments? Seeing none, this again is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker.
Baker.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
DeCambre.
Yes.
Garcia abstains. Pinter.
Yes.
Seitz.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes. Motion carries with a vote of six, four, and one abstention, and no one in opposition. The motion is therefore carried. Next item on the agenda will be Resolution Number 15, as soon as I can get everything back up. Ms. Byrd.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 15, requesting continuous municipal service for certain police officers.
Ms. Pinter.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yes.
Ms. Pinter, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to make a comment that I'm really glad that we're able to do this for our police officers. Given the research that our city has done, and the feedback from our employees, this is something that will allow our sworn police officer personnel to participate in a benefit system of their choosing, that will provide them coverage that is very important to them, and I'm really glad that we have this opportunity to take care of the...
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Seitz.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the business of the Westminster City Council for the public portion of tonight. We will take a five-minute recess, and then we'll re-adjourn for an executive session currently on the calendar.